Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Today is April 17th, 2025. Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Today is April 17th, 2025, and this is Yaden Borough Council Legislative Meeting. I would like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe in the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Cave, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Our esteemed Mayor Rowan Hipkins is not here this evening. Our President Latoya Moreau is not here this evening. Vice President Leana Roeklout.
Present.
Councilor Nicole Beatty.
Present.
Councilor Antoinette Trueheart is not here this evening. Councilor Michael Trent.
Here.
Councilor Jesse Peets.
Present.
Councilor Lorraine Johnson.
Present.
Sean Kilkeny from Kilkeny Law, our solicitor. Nafis Nichols, our finance director, is not here this evening. Yolanda Hughes, our elected tax collector, is not here this evening. And we have Joe Viscusco from Pinoni Engineering with us. I think. Madam Vice President, we have a call.
Thank you very much. I would like to entertain citizens' forum. Any comments? Do we have any requests? No requests? Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along. Okay, can I have a motion to consider to approve the March 13th, 2025 caucus meeting minutes?
So moved?
Seconded.
Properly moved and duly seconded? Are there any questions? Hearing no questions. I would like to have a vote, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for consideration to approve the March 20th, 2025 legislative meeting minutes.
So moved?
Seconded.
Duly moved and properly seconded? Any questions? Hearing no questions. I would like to entertain a vote, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mayor's report.
Deliver that. Madam Vice President, the mayor held his first quarterly Citizens Forum of the Year on Thursday, February 27th, in Borough's Social Hall. Three full-time officers were sworn in, and we also had a building update from Mr. Engineer, the William Pensco District. The next mayor's forum will be held on Thursday, June 5th, 2025. Police staffing update, three new police officers were sworn in in the mayor's forum and started active duty on Monday, March 11th. This will bring the Yaden Police Department up to full staffing with 20 full-time officers, along with one part-time officer, Norman Rowland. We will incur another vacancy when an officer is due to retire in August. And special thanks to the Civil Service Commission for successfully spearheading the hiring process for full-time officers, as well as a thank you to Borough Council for approving these hires. And then, lastly, there's a special Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April 19th. On April 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, Yaden will host a cleanup and tree planting event coinciding with Earth Day. We will meet at West Cops Creek Parkway and Parmley Avenue, which will be the focus area. Residents are asked to volunteer and pitch in with the mayor and councilors. Many supplies from the cleanup will be on hand, but feel free to bring your own as well. Special thanks to Borough Council Vice Chair Leana Roeklout for spearheading this event. For more information, please visit our Borough website at yadenbureau.com or email info@yadenbureau.com to volunteer.
That concludes the mayor's report. Thank you. Next item, president's report. I do not have a president's report. So moving right along to the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There's two motions. One is to consider the adoption ordinance 2025-003, which amends ordinance 285-32, special purpose and special permit parking zones.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please.
So moved?
Seconded.
Properly moved and duly seconded? Seconded? Any questions? Hearing none. I would like to entertain a vote, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Then, Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to advertise the ordinance 2025-004, amending 220-70, which is the abatement and impoundment and violations.
So moved?
Seconded.
I didn't ask to entertain. Properly moved and duly seconded? Any questions? Hearing none. I would like to entertain votes, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Next on the agenda, solicitors' report. Mr. Kilkeny.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Council met an executive session this evening at 6:30 to discuss matters of litigation and personnel. These matters are compliant with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. A brief solicitors' report this month. We drafted an amended ordinance 2020-70, updating penalties for abandoned vehicles and impoundment. We are involved in ongoing litigation, which is related to 1024 Church Lane and 548 West Providence Road. We have, I know Ms. Bryant has reached out to Mr. Scott in Communications about a land bank referral and exploring various options and working with the county and the White of Properties and Conservation Act. And our office meets monthly with Mr. Cave and the engineer to go over matters that we're working on in unison and to keep council informed. That concludes my report for this morning. Unless anybody has any questions.
Hearing none?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, engineers' report, please.
Thank you. We have two resolutions to consider this evening. The first resolution, and these are both for small water and sewer grant applications. And the first one are for stormwater improvements on Darnell Avenue.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please, for consideration to approve a resolution for the submission of a small water and sewer grant for stormwater improvements on Darnell Avenue.
So moved?
Seconded.
Properly moved and duly seconded? Any questions? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second one for a small water and sewer grant for sanitary improvements on the 800 block of Bullock Avenue.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please, for consideration to approve a resolution for the submission of a small water and sewer grant for sanitary improvements on the 800 block of Bullock Avenue.
So moved?
Seconded.
Properly moved and duly seconded? I would like to entertain a roll call, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the third item for consideration is the approval to proceed with the bidding of the 2025 road program, which will be the completion of Yaden Avenue and possibly some additional smaller sections of road once we have a meeting next week with the Public Works Department.
I would like to entertain a motion at this time, please.
So moved?
Okay.
Seconded.
Properly moved and duly seconded? May I, I would like to entertain a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And just a couple items to bring to council's attention. 1219 Longacre, those contracts are being executed by the contractor. Remember, we took bids on that several months ago, and then it was held up in terms of some legal issues. But that, we've gotten through that, and so the contracts are being executed, and that will move to demolition. I would think within the next 60 days, that building will be gone. And then, the borough received a grant for a borough-wide infiltration and inflow study to take care of some of the sanitary sewer issues that we have within the boroughs. We're beginning that study. That's just an FYI for the borough. And we did find out last week that PennDOT, they're doing a, they're doing a program all over the county replacing handicap ramps. If you remember, about a year ago, we did a borough-wide replacement in several intersections. So if you see, the manager has not signed the documents yet, but if you see their crews, it's Church and Gunther, Church and Parmley, Church and Darnell, and Church and Raider, and McDade, and Cyril. So if you see crews there, that's got nothing to do with any of the borough work. That's strictly a PennDOT project. And again, it's county-wide. So just an FYI.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
I actually do have a question for you. Well, more like a statement for you. I wanted to just say thank you on behalf of Yaden Borough Council and the residents of Yaden for your involvement in that telephone call with PennDOT regarding Church Lane and McDade. As a result of your participation and your aggressiveness, we're going to see some movement very soon.
They actually issued the permit the next day. So that was really good to see. And I did get an email today from the contractor. He's ready to start those handicap ramps next week. So that'll move that forward, and then hopefully bring this project to fruition. And I got another, I did ask about the other speed table west of the intersection. And because they wanted us to put that into our program at Church and McDade, of course, there was no more money in that grant. And we told them that that was not a borough issue. That really is a PennDOT issue. And so I was told by PennDOT that that is moving forward under another PennDOT program, that they're going to put that ramp in. So that's going to happen also.
Okay, wonderful. Did we get any clarifications with respect to the delineators?
Yeah, they're going to, they've allowed us. So it's kind of a two-step process. First of all, and I sent Mr. Cave a sketch of it that Reverend Megan did today. So as you drive through the intersection, I don't know if you've driven various roads anywhere, you'll see at nighttime, there are those reflectors that are in the pavement that light up. As your headlights hit them, they reflect. And they're not powered by anything other than your headlight reflecting off of them. So they will be put in through the intersection, delineating the sort of the movement to the left as you're coming from McDade, going on to, crossing over Church and going on to the lower section of McDade, which of course will be one-way. So that's one thing that we didn't talk about on the call. And then on the delineators on the other side, they were originally going to just put the delineators into the pavement. Now they're going to put them on what they call a quick curb. So they're going to be mounted on a curb. And if we see that that solves the problem, fine. If not, then we can move to a more restrictive barrier at some point in the future. But at least they, following the call and realizing the importance of it to the borough, they didn't want to put the delineators right into, they want to mount them on what they call a quick curb.
Okay.
All right?
Wonderful.
That'll be a first stage.
Okay.
Okay. So again, I think all of that work you will see within the next 30 days.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
With that, I wish everybody a blessed Easter, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you to you as well. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Reports, finance.
Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the accounts payable list for April 2025.
I would like to. Okay. All right. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion for consideration of the accounts payable list for April 2025.
So moved?
Seconded.
Probably moved and duly seconded? Any questions? I actually have a question. I'm sorry. Oh. I see on here recycle cans. Is the borough purchasing recycle cans?
So it's been, I guess, custom that we have a stash of the yellow ones. And then what happens is residents come in and purchase them from the borough.
Oh, okay.
For $20.
For $20?
They're the yellow ones with the Yaden decal on it. Yaden recycle decal on the front.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right, that was my only question. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I would like to entertain votes at this time, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you.
And then, Madam Vice President, I'd like a motion to consider the March 2025 cash balance report.
I would like to entertain a motion.
So moved?
Properly moved and duly seconded? Any questions? Hearing none. I would like to entertain the votes, please.
Vice President Roeklout.
Yes.
Councilor Beatty.
Yes.
Councilor Trent.
Yes.
Councilor Peets.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving right along, ordinances and zoning.
I have nothing additional, Madam Vice President, from the caucus report.
Thank you very much. Public Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, an introduction to our new Public Works Director.
Hello, hi.
Hi.
Yes, hi. It's been a great four days.
Speak into the mic.
It's been a great four days being Director of Public Works here and getting to know the team in Public Works. Michael's amazing, and the team is so great. They have great work ethic. So very grateful to be here. It's such an honor. And I'm open to opinions from the public and council and any feedback. I would greatly appreciate it. But all the infrastructure projects look exciting. So I'm ready. I'm very excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Welcome.
And my report is as stands as last week. And does anybody have any questions? Or, hold on one second. Earth Day, please everybody come out Saturday. We're looking forward to having you as all. Info, is it info dot?
Info at.
Info at yadenborough.com to volunteer. And please be able to see everybody out there. Any questions?
The weather should be nice.
I hope so.
So what are we doing on Earth Day?
We're doing some tree planting on Earth Day. We're doing some cleaning from Parmley Avenue to 65th Street. We're going to plant trees from West Cops Creek Parkway, Island, up through Loyola Boulevard.
Wonderful. Wonderful. And the time?
Time is 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We'll have light refreshments in the morning and some lunch for everybody in the afternoon as soon as we're finished up.
Sounds like a good time.
I hope so.
Good time.
We're going to do it.
Okay.
I have a question. We planted trees on Maple Terrace.
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, that is my report.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Public Safety.
Good evening, all. My reports are going to stand as read at last week's caucus. Just one update. The individual that was responsible for the shoot, or allegedly responsible for the shooting on Norma did turn themselves in last week. We, the Bows interviewers, recommended a million dollars cash, but the judge decided to give the individual $500,000, and 10% was $50,000. But the individual's still incarcerated at this time.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for that information. Just a sad situation, but we got to do what we got to do. So I don't want to say, you know, good, but, you know.
Again, it was a great effort with Leah and our team and CID working together.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate every officer. Yaden Police Officer and any outside help that may have contributed to, you know, finding a person of interest. So thank you so much.
Any questions on either report?
Emergency management report, too?
Stands as read.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
If that's it, then that's it. Thank you so much. Okay, fire departments report. Okay. Planning Commission. Okay. Councilor Trueheart, she's not here. She's in charge of the planning commission. So we unfortunately don't have a report. Recreation?
My report stands as submitted, Roy. Does she have anything to add?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one addition to the recreation report. The Yaden Community Love Garden will have its spring cleaning and planting on Saturday, May 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the community garden, weather permitting. And bring your gloves. If you have any seeds that you want to plant, water, anything that you need, please come out and help us clean up the garden. I think it'll be a welcome addition to what's going on in the park.
Okay.
That's my report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilor Beatty, would you just like to give just a brief overview with respect to your, the Flag Day that you're working so hard on?
We got to keep, we want to make sure people know about it.
Yes, well, it's been advertised, I believe, on Nextdoor. We're going to put that in the newsletter. Just a little bit more about some of the activities. Please tell your young people, the babies, bring their wetsuits, their swimsuits, because the moon bounce will have a water slide. So we want to make sure they're prepared. Too bad we're too old to get in that. But, you know, hopefully we'll have great weather. And that's about, I mean, we have a lot of fun activities. The parade, once again, will be on Bailey Road. The ceremony commences right after that, probably around 11:30-ish. We'll have some great guest speakers where there are. And I want to keep some things as a surprise. Live music, food. We have Ms. Margaret, who's going to entertain the little babies with her bubbles and all that.
Okay.
You know, and of course, as I've been talking about for the past few months, the drone show at the field. So please spread the word. If you need flyers, let us know. We'll give you some flyers. And just tell your people to come out and have a good time. Everything is free, and please come out.
June 14th.
June 14th, 11th until dusk, dawn, whatever, dusk. Dusk.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like it's going to be a good time. Last year was a good time. This year is going to be a good time. So I'm looking forward to it. And I believe that is it at this.
We have a couple.
You want to say?
For the, for that, I'll do this one.
I got an email from the county for, from their Veterans Department. I just wanted to let everybody know about a Veterans Resource Fair of Saturday, June 7th, 2025, from 12:00 to 3:00. That's going to be at First African Baptist Church, 901 Clinton Avenue in Sharon Hill. So just to, going to provide resources for veterans, such as, you know, job placement and transitioning into the civilian world, stuff like that, so. I don't know if we can put this up on our website.
Can you send it digitally?
I'll send you the link. Sure. Sure. All right, there you go.
And also, the hometown heroes banners. We're getting ready to get these situated throughout the borough. The cost is $160. It is revenue neutral. We're asking all veterans and family members to please purchase a banner for your loved one. First check. Mr. Borough Manager. And they're going to look really, really nice. So please tell everybody, spread the word on the website, get your hometown heroes banner. Hurrah. Yes.
So I have a question. What are the details with respect to the banner? Like the size, black and white color? Where will they be hung?
They're colored. They're 18 by 36. The same size as the Yaden banners that are out there. Councilor Peets and I, we have a list of designs. So we will be going through these and collaborating on which one we think would be best for Yaden Borough. Anything else?
Yes. So when someone, so when someone gives you a check for the banner, they don't know exactly what the design is going to be?
Yeah, no, they don't. And I need to ask the Borough Manager, Mr. Cave, or is it possible that there are several designs? Or does each borough have its own one design? are, is it possible that there are several designs or does each borough have its own one design? I'm thinking it's one design. That's what I'm thinking. I think it's going to be a uniform design. So he and I will decide.
I think it would be good, and it's just my suggestion, that maybe we should have, you know, all the specifications of the banner.
I think it's all on the website, isn't it?
But you said you don't know about the design, so.
Well, we have to pick a design, so we haven't done that.
We got the whole list here to pick from.
Right, but so if I give you a check, right, what am I doing? Am I giving you a check and a picture?
Yes.
Yes.
And but, and what are you going to give me in return? Let me know what is it going to look like?
I'm hoping to receive.
Yeah, a receipt.
No, but how do I know what it's supposed to look like?
We'll let you know which design we have chosen. It'll be, once we sit down and decide, we will put the design on the website. And those who want to be a part will, and those who don't?
Well, it's not about that, but you don't want people to, and I hope people do take advantage of this. I think it's a great idea. I love going through different boroughs and seeing the veterans being honored in such a way. But I just feel like the person should know everything that they're getting when they give you their money.
And they will, they will, everything will be on the website, the design and everything.
Me personally, I wouldn't accept any checks until we had this solidified.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
But we're just starting.
Yeah, well, you got your first check.
You got the first check.
So they trust your judgment when you decide what design?
I'm not going to do this by myself, I have some help here.
I have a question about this as well. So what if you don't write checks, like I haven't, I'm a veteran, but can you do one money order? But what about having a link put on the website?
I think that's already up.
No, I think you guys have to decide which the image is, I think, and then.
Well, you did put the application on the website though, didn't you?
Not, no, no.
So we need to get that done.
Distributed to you guys.
Okay. Some people don't write checks.
Yeah, money order is fine.
Yeah.
Let's decide on this tonight, in that way, we can get everything flowing tomorrow and, you know.
That's fine.
You know, I'll pick it tonight.
Well, it's a nice initiative. My other question. So about how many do you forecast you may want to do before you actually start putting the banners up? Like what if only two people do, God forbid, or a few people, a sprinkle of people do it? Like I think it should be a nice presentation. And my other question is, where are you going to place these banners? What street? Because you said where the other ones are, I can't remember where all the banners are.
Well, they're on the major streets.
Church Lane and Bailey?
Yeah, some are, some companies do 10. You have to have at least 10 before they will even put them out. And they will be like on the main roads, Bailey Road, Church Lane, Chester High, Chester Avenue, Long Lake Boulevard, yeah, on the main streets.
Maybe that's something we all can agree on, you know, when the time comes.
And I think Mr. Peets and I kind of talked about doing an unveiling once a year at the Veterans Brunch of all the ones that will be posted for that year. It was a big success, surely.
All right, at the Veterans Brunch?
Making a nice presentation, like these are the ones for the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would just recommend before you put anything on a website, that you have all of the specifics on there as well, all of the details, so people know exactly what they're buying into.
I'll sit down with Mr. Cave.
We'll pick this tonight.
Yeah.
Sounds wonderful.
Much success with this, this is a very nice endeavor.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to veer from the norm, just a little bit, a tad bit.
Yeah, I have a question about the Veterans Brunch, whether it includes deceased veterans or just veterans that are.
I'm sorry, does it include?
Deceased veterans. Deceased veterans that just.
Deceased veterans. Yeah, it's $160 for the banner, equipment and everything to go up.
So those that are deceased and on the scene?
Right, yes.
As long as they have a picture, a picture of the record of service.
Of the service and your uniform.
A DD 214 or something like that, if you have it.
You need a DD 214?
No, if you don't have it, just put your dates, it can all be verified, very easily.
Is there a bridge in their title?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay, wonderful, yes.
Okay, so if all minds are clear, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?